This because Andy's had a situation at home. Next month, the planning board is going to do a presentation to the ZBA. And I'll let you Dan explain what the details are about it.
Sure. Yeah, so there's a couple, two presentations that we're kind of actually bringing around to multiple boards and committees throughout the village to kind of get their inputting on thoughts on it. Uh, the first one is what we call the vacant storefront inventory and selected select central business district survey report, which long title, but essentially what that is, is that it's kind of a combination of a market analysis done by Esri, uh, you know, Esri like RTS Pro and Esri's mapping software. They have something called business analyst, which gives you insights into kind of the current commercial market trends. For a different select area and also shows you potential growth into the next couple of years.
EZRI Esri?
Yes, Esri. Yeah, ESRI.
ESRI.
Yeah, ESRI. Um, so we use a combination of that tool, um, a combination of actual field verification of current vacancies throughout the village. So go into every storefront marking which are vacant, which is non vacant, right, uh, confirming them with about different business registrations and, uh, you know, what currently have active the village. And also going, uh, to twelve randomly selected villages across Suffolk County, um, to see basically to kind of get an understanding of what the current state of small municipality market is for retail restaurants, professional service industries, right? Trying to understand kind of what's going on in Port Jefferson, what the demand looks like across the county and what are potential growth opportunities for. Now that whole conversation kind of came up where there was a sentiment more so on the planning board side that was about the, um, kind of the current village code about having especially the mixed use projects retail on the ground floor and things of that nature. Um, and basically trying to inform what can we actually use, how can we establish active space, how could actually establish that? So, um, that's kind of the first one. I know it's a bit of a long explanation. So sorry for that.
We're gonna have a whole presentation.
Exactly. Yeah. Um, and the second one really quick is a basically, uh, for a comprehensive plan, we did an audit, the comprehensive plan. So staff went through all the action items listed on the comprehensive plan. Marked which ones were completed, which ones are currently in progress at the time. So the presentation kind of goes through those different areas of the conference plan, what was done. Um, and kind of talks about implementation because we never really had an implementation plan, um, done, uh, for the comprehensive plan. And that's kind of where the village wants to take village administration that next step forward. So, those will be before you in October.
Right.
And yeah, so just for your awareness, I guess.
Thank you very much. So next, uh, so next October, so October, I'm gonna ask everyone to do their best and I'm guilty of it too, to try to be here by six o'clock so that Dan and Parker can do their presentation. Well, that'll be the first thing we handle.
Sure.
Couple other just quick action items. Uh, has their training out in Riverhead. It's a good training to go to. I've been to it a couple of times. Uh, if you haven't registered, let Cindy know. She'll register you.
You can register me.
I am, I am going.
Me too.
I'm going as well.
So.
Might as well do all of us.
All right.
They serve, they serve dinner and everything.
Yeah. And it satisfies your requirement for the years, which is great. Cindy, I'm gonna do the draft minutes for July twenty fourth. Everyone review them if they haven't, take a moment. Um, Cindy, I think everyone can, everyone was present?
No, I don't think I was.
Tracy wasn't, okay. And this is from July. We didn't have a meeting in August.
Correct.
Missed y'all so much.
I think I saw your husband more than I saw you.
Not such a bad upgrade.
No, well, I don't know. I'd argue that. Anybody got any questions or comments about the minutes?
No.
Alright, nobody has any questions or comments? Antonia?
No, I think. What did we have? Three that day?
Yeah. I think we held. Yep.
Two were held though.
Yeah.
Great.
Alright, that being said, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the July twenty fourth, uh, twenty twenty five minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Cindy, the meeting minutes are approved. Alright, the first item on the agenda tonight is one oh five Roosevelt. Okay, this is the one with the pool.
Yes.
Parker, can you bring up the site plan just real quick?
On your last page.
One oh five Roosevelt.
Site plan, please.
Oh wait, isn't this public hearing?
No, not until six thirty.
Oh, okay, okay.
We'll just talk.
So we have two on Roosevelt. One was a holdover.
Yeah, one's all, this is a new one.
Yeah, it's on.
Alright, so. Yes, the, so this one has two variances on it. Um, one of them is sixteen where twenty is, and the other one is three where, um, five is required. If you read the report, staff report, it's pretty straightforward. Um, that fire pit, and I believe it says to be removed. So that fire pit is going. If he moves, just doing some math, I was looking at it. If you move it over there, you got, you're gonna need multiple variances. This is the one, the pool. If you move the pool where the fire pit was, you're, you're, you're reducing. The only thing that I would have a concern is, and we'll discuss it with the applicant, is, um, why don't we just move the pool equipment and get rid of that one and minimize the variance?
Pool equipment's on the top.
Top, yep, top corner there. I, I, you know, I don't like putting pool equipment close to the property line, especially with neighbors. Um, so we'll have to, uh, see if we can get the applicant to. Now, Dan, talk to me, talk to us real quick. Um, you'll notice everyone lower right corner there, that fence that's there, I'm not sure if the, that's the applicants or the neighbors, but it does look like the applicants, it's consistent with the chain link he's got everywhere else. So we're gonna have to discuss that with the applicant and have rectify that or at least address it. I don't know what rectify looks like.
Where would you have moved the pool equipment to?
Um, either the back corner to the right on that picture, or just moving another two more feet off the property line. Yes, the new, yeah, right.
New code says you should not, so that fence would have to come down anyway.
Well, that's a building code. My concern is, is that it's on the, on the right now, right? Yes. But you are right, you're right. Well, we'll just need, we'll need someone, we'll bring that up and have.
They're proposing a fence too, if you look around the pool. It does say chain link, you're right.
Right, I'm sorry.
No.
Sorry, which, you're saying the five foot at the bottom?
So the east side of the property, the east side of the property has a five foot chain link.
That it's not on their property.
No, it's inside their property.
No.
No, it extends out by point two.
See, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yep, 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 okay.
Yeah, that's okay.
Actually, in two places on the corner of that property, it extends over, but the back fencing is PVC, that would adhere to code, but the chain link fence is considered climbable. That doesn't mean code.
Right, but the, you're right.
So when they remove that to, to meet code for the pool.
Hopefully they'll dress all that.
They should bring the fence line within their property boundaries.
So. That being said, it's a type two action under sequence, there's no major implications. Um, it's pretty straightforward. We've seen enough pools in our lifetime here.
It's ten feet from the main structure.
Oh, they, here, they noted in section three fencing compliance fully located within the subject boundaries in accordance. No building permit shall be issued until this condition is satisfied.
Yeah, I, I might, because I read this today, it might have been, I had a draft.
You've been recommending potential conditions for.
Right, okay.
Potential probation or choose.
An older report, so I know we, I know we discussed this on Tuesday.
Okay, yes. Oh, yeah, this is the updated.
Yeah, I didn't have the updated report. So if nobody has any real questions on this, I just want to try to get to the other two. The other two are a little more complex. Next one's gonna be one twenty four. This is a holdover. Tracy, um, you were not here last meeting. So. And Lex had to recuse, you recused yourself on this one, so. So you're gonna have, obviously have to sit in on this. You were able to read all the minutes and everything and.
I, I read the staff report.
Okay. Oh, me, you and Dan here, it's alright. Yeah, I forgot, yeah, I forgot what the court. Dan's so quiet over there. Alright, so there's a couple of things going on. There's, there's a. He's really, you're really like, yeah, I know, really.
Keep blind.
Yeah, I'm telling you. You're gonna make a good chairman someday, so. Alright, so on this property, it's a couple of things. We have, uh, two retail spaces that are undersized, but are pre-exist, claiming to be pre-existing. Um, there's difference of opinion, but I'm not here to debate opinion. There's, and then there's part, and there's an undersized apart. Now, Tracy, since you weren't here, I'm just gonna give you the brief. There's also another issue about a fence being on, this is the property adjacent to Stanford's, uh, extended stay building. So apparently there's an issue with his fence and, uh, being on Danford's property. Danford's was, a representative from Danford's was here. They were gonna work out the details. And something, I believe the AC unit was the AC unit an issue too? I don't remember. Maybe that's the other one. That's the other one that.
Yes, that was, that was.
So, so there's an issue about, um, his fence transversing the pro, the Danford's property. And is that shown on here? Oh, right. So we may have to either condition this, uh, as either whether he gets an easement or, um, or the fence is removed. And, you know, the applicant was here, he's aware of the situation. He was attempting to rectify it with them. Uh, we'll find, we'll get an update about that.
So any decision we make would then be contingent upon them resolving the situation?
Well, we can condition it.
Did they not resolve it or?
They did. They, we've been, from my understanding conversations with them, that they've been constant contacted, at least last time I spoke with them, constant contact with the Danford's property, but haven't gotten response back. Again, this is more verbal, but that, that's where we left off. And but based on the submission, we haven't seen a resolution for it.
Right.
In terms of conditioning, it does also still require, so we did mention it as potential condition, advise approval to resolve this issue, um, but it does also ultimately require planning board. There are other conditions as well about making, making sure it means building code and.
That was part two of this, that anything that we do here, um, if we approve all of this or some of it, the applicant may, or probably will have to go back to the planning board, um, for a number of things. So they could also address that as well. So we can either send a letter to the planning board or a memo to the planning board saying, um, please note that, you know, please note the situation and it should be clarified prior to any approvals.
So there are three variances for this?
Uh, yes, three, one of them.
Pertaining to the size of the, like, the, uh, I guess the apartments.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, one's apartments, two are like retail. Yeah.
Right, because there's two retail spaces on the first floor. The issue with the apartment below, um, is that it's three hundred and eighteen square feet. The village requires four hundred. Just to put that in perspective, and as Alexi reminded me, three hundred and eighteen square feet is twenty by twenty. So if you, that's four hundred square feet, twenty by twenty. So that's smaller than twenty by twenty. Um, take out a bathroom, which is forty square feet, take out a kitchen, which is then, it'll take, we'll say it's fifteen square feet. I mean, you're really, tiny is an understatement for that apartment.
But these were the existing floor plans.
Well, that's, that's according to what we've heard from staff, um, building inspector. And you, the re, you've made alterations more than fifty percent.
Right.
So there's a, let's put, let's put it this way, this does not match what they had on file for the CEU.
Yeah.
Whether he did it or the prior owner did it.
How long has he owned it?
I, off the top of my head, I can't remember, but I think he.
Two years?
Two, okay. Um, so whether he did it or the prior owner did it, he's unfortunately paying for the sins of someone else.
So this is not about use though, right?
No, not at all.
Not about the use, yeah.
Not about use.
Mixed use is technically, uh, conditionally permitted in CEU, yeah.
Is there another apartment that's next to this one?
Yeah.
At least if you look at the.
There's five apartments total.
Yes.
Yeah, I know, somewhere upstairs, but on the same floor.
Yeah, I think you're right.
It's, uh. Well, I know where you're going with this, but we have to have the, you know, we can bring it up to the applicant, but he's coming in and saying he doesn't want, by doing, by submitting this application, he's saying he wants this. Um, if he doesn't, then he's gonna have to read.
For two apartments instead of one.
I, exactly. I understand the financials on it, uh, but you know, it's, I, I just feel like three hundred, I mean, four hundred's tight as it is, three hundred and eighteen is really tight. Um, so, but you know, we can, so.
Some people can't afford more.
Not disagreeing with you. Uh, the last one is one hundred Roosevelt. We, uh, we, alright, we have a couple of things going on here. We have, now we have two more variances. They took away three and now we added two, right, or we took away?
Yeah, removed two, added three, so it ends up with ten in total.
Alright, so we ended up with ten because of, um, so there's a lot of things going on here. Um, Tracy, I'm gonna give you the broad strokes again. There is a retaining wall that was built by the owner on village property, which is being negotiated with, um, the village, uh, village attorney. Um, so there's, there's some issues there. This is a corner lot, so we have two front yards, which then brings in a whole bunch of these variances. So we have to look at this, you remember this, a corner lot, so it creates a lot of complexity. There was residents here, um, his back fence, like with the other one, is on the neighbor's property, but he's already stated that that'll be rectified with the pool. There was some question about the pool equipment and where it is and noise the neighbor brought up. Uh, so there's a lot of things going on here. And he's looking for ten variances.
Well.
Back, yep, no.
Top left.
That's the pool equipment, yes.
So that's basically on Old Post Road, so there's no neighbors there.
Well, no, two.
That's the furthest.
Well, right, but I'm just telling you, there was, there was a neighbor here and he's.
Yeah, his house is directed to the, uh, the west.
Yeah. So, um, but yeah, apparently there was an old wood retaining wall there. The wood wall fell. The building inspector went out, the, the applicant replaced it. The building inspector authorized him to do it because he was more worried about the landscape falling, uh, the, the material falling into the road. But the problem is, is that that retaining wall is in the village right away. So fun, fun, fun. Um.
But that.
Wasn't there a wall there before?
That has nothing real, well, I'm sorry.
Wasn't there a wall there before?
Yeah, it was on the village right away as well.
Place was there?
It's, but it's not within the scope of the application.
Yeah, it's not with, I'm just giving you a little background, so, um, because.
It had something to do with it.
No, no, I'm just giving you background.
Why it was held over, the last one.
Negotiations with the legal department.
So this survey is up, this plan is updated since we were last, received August twenty sixth.
Yes, so there's been some slight adjustments to the plan. Part of that is now there's a new pool, uh, pool compliance fence proposed around, uh, you see kind of from the, entirely northwest of the property, that back square, that new fencing there. Uh, that's new, that we proposed as part of this. The problem is that that's where the additional variances are now coming from. So they, so they're, it's a five foot fence, so it's technically in a front yard of the property. So there's now one variance for each side of that fencing.
Uh-huh, I see.
Yeah.
Because now you have five foot fence in the front yard, because.
That's considered a five year.
Exactly.
But it's actually, you have to have.
Is chain link?
Well, no, the proposed fence, uh, proposed, alright.
He's got three, there's three different kinds of fencing and three different heights all over the property.
Alright, well.
Yeah. Five foot on the northern side.
There's five foot, there's six foot, there's three foot, there's, there's all sorts of.
Lots of stuff going on there.
I don't think there's three, I think it's a five.
Right.
It's existing.
And now there's, there's.
Tricky, yes.
We have another survey, hold on a second.
Okay, alright, okay.
The other one that's also on there also has three foot fences. Maybe that's something to do with the area.
Well, that's part of the variant.
The other, the other application.
The other application is installing a pool. This is an existing pool, correct?
No.
No, it's all installed.
This is being installed too.
I will say, yeah, because, I mean, that's what the code requires. It requires everything in front of the house must be three feet in height, open wood type construction. So a lot of households already have that, but then when they go to add a pool, you don't have to.
You have a new survey, right?
Yep. We do.
Waiting on it.
Except receivable.
If you go to submission history.
Alright.
That's the newest one we have.
Okay.
Okay.
So just bring that back up, Parker, please. Alright, so a couple of things. The pool is, back out a little bit, Parker, that perfect, good. The pool is forward of the house technically on Old Post Road, so that's one of the variances. The AC equipment is in the front yard, although it's that we know reality, side yard, right, but, so that's one of the variances. A lot of fencing variances, rear yard setback for a shed, I think is one of them, frame shed.
Yeah, the back left, bottom, uh, left is a trick shed. They want to legalize that.
Parker, slide up one second, please. Yeah, just, other way, sorry, down. You're up, my, right. So yeah, there's some stuff there.
You know, there was a shed there previously that was on both properties and that's now being removed. Is it the right circle?
Okay, so, um.
Do we have a distance from the pool to the home?
So we don't. I, this in the staff report, we, we said probably they should have, that should be submitted. They didn't move it, so now.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's a variance too.
It's, now it was six feet, now it's seven feet. Now, as a request the board made, you guys said, say, do you rather be further away from the home? They moved it a foot further from the home.
Right.
But it's made on the other side.
But it needs a variance.
Yes, it's one of those in here.
Alright, now the, the other thing is, and to stay consistent with what we've done, what we did with, um, East Main and Main, is that the applicant needs to update this application. Applicant needs to update the application because the variances that they started with are now different. They've changed a number of times. We're gonna have to have the applicant, I'm not saying it's gonna stop us.
Doesn't it just amend the application when they put it in?
They gotta, but they gotta update the application.
It doesn't have to be renoticed.
No, 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 it's just gotta be updated to have the right, because right now, we've, the variances have changed significantly from last time, so, um, you know, we're not talking, you know, minor things. We're talking, we're actually adding variances that weren't on the original, uh, submitted on the original, so they have to add, supply an amended application.
If we move this pool into the front yard.
Right.
Then we, we have that variance to deal with anyway.
Yeah, you're not getting, the, the properties just.
Right, so, but, but then you would alleviate the, the distance from the structure to the pool, you'd be removing. You'd actually pick up a greater cramp relief, but a removing.
But then you probably could have one, if you moved it that way, then you're probably gonna have one distance to the side yard, because technically that, the top of that's the side yard.
Right.
So you're just swapping one for another.
So can we?
Yeah.
Like decide on the application, but then change the second move.
Well, we have to, we can condition.
Condition.
Yeah, we can condition it with an amended, it's, it's not a fatal flaw, it's just more housekeeping, so that.
Supposed to be, whatever the state government says is what we have to do.
So that's gonna have something to do with a lot of these variances.
So.
You're right, it could be a year other.
Are there any other comments or questions on this from the six thirty time?
Because it's continuously specifically noted as chain link, so, and I'm gonna.
I know you're right.
I get it, I just don't wanna say that, hey, we approve this and have it listed specifically.
Well, we can approve it as per accordance with the New York State Building Code.
I'll tell you what our code reads, it does say the type of fence shall be approved by the building inspector who in evaluating a request for approval shall give due consideration to the structural adequacy and durability of the proposed fence, sure the same.
Still dictated by the New York State Building.
So we have the New York State, and I think, I think you are right.
I just don't, I think the concern is that a, a chain link is considered climbable by a toddler, and that's where, why they have issues. I just wanna make sure the village isn't liable if it, we specify the kind of, I just, you know, you know me.
Yep. Alright, any other questions or comments?
Just have one question, if we recall, what, what was the address of the neighbor on that one hundred Roosevelt?
He's, he's at Old Post.
Four ninety-nine?
Yeah, he should be.
Old Post, yeah.
Yep, he's putting it up, right, four ninety-nine, uh, looks like four ninety-nine, Dan, I can't see it from here. Yep, four ninety-nine. Thank you.
Can you go aerial for a second, uh, yes. Okay, driveway's in the, yeah, yeah.
And notice where the neighbor's house is, hold on, Parker. Uh, notice where the neighbor's house is, he's close to, uh, that is the east, right? He's closer to the east, yes, he's at the house.
So the pool would actually be situated further away from the neighbor's.
Yeah, if you move, yeah.
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 And then the other application's on the same street.
Yes, it's like next door. Across the street, right?
They got a two for one from.
Yeah, they're all for, yeah.
I don't know.
Alright.
So, if you, um, wait, hi, it's Parker. I'm just looking at the area and the neighborhood.
Yeah, it's a pool over there, right.
Uh-huh.
Parker, slide down.
And its proximity to the house.
Slide up, sorry, slide up. Bad habit. One there, do we have any other pools in the neighborhood? Yeah.
My neighborhood, I don't know why they built them like that, but you literally walk out the den door and it's like where you walk.
Yeah, I know, I saw, filled it in, the previous owners filled it in.
Anybody else can make questions or comments? Alright, we're gonna open up the public hearing. Uh, I'm gonna go, one oh five. Everybody ready? Good evening, everyone, welcome to the September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five Incorporated Village of Port Jefferson zoning Board of Appeals meeting. We have three, three items on the agenda, two, two are holdovers, one of them is a new application. Uh, we are going to start with the new application. Cindy, are we all ready? You're ready? Dan, you're ready? Okay, alright. Uh, I ask everyone if you could silence your phones, um, after the applicant does his presentation, we're gonna open it up, where the board is gonna ask questions, and then at which point, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on it, I'm gonna ask that you raise your hand, come forward, be sworn in, and we'll let you speak on the application. Uh, that being said, tonight's first hearing is, uh, one oh five Roosevelt Avenue, it's our appeal number ZB zero, zero nineteen dash twenty-five. Tax map number is zero two zero six dash nineteen dash four dash zero zero one. Zoning is RB two residential district, location east side of Roosevelt Avenue, approximately a hundred feet north of the intersection with Wilson Drive. Property owner is John Flanagan, applicant is South Shore Pools care of Steven Bertolino. Contact is South Shore Pools care of Steven Bertolino, description is proposed fourteen by twenty-four in-ground swimming pool. The action is a public hearing, the proposed project requires the following variances under the Incorporated Village of Port Jefferson code. Pursuant to two fifty dash eleven C subsection three, part A, swimming pools must be set back a minimum of twenty feet from any property line. The proposed pool approximately fourteen by twenty-four is located approximately sixteen feet from the northern side property line requiring a four-foot variance. Variance number two, pursuant to code number two fifty dash twenty-eight A, section one, subsection B, part two. Passive accessory, accessory structures must be at least a minimum of five feet from the rear and side property line. The proposed pool filter and equipment is located approximately three feet from the northern side property line regard, requiring a two-foot variance. Sir.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Before you, I'm sorry, one last thing, can just be sworn in. Are you an attorney? Oh, I apologize, sir, please proceed.
Steve Bertolino, one thirty West Main Street, Eastside, the applicant, having listened to the, uh, public, uh, work session, gonna make the board, uh, a little happy and maybe curry some goodwill. Uh, variance number two will now be withdrawn with respect to the pool equipment. Uh, I spoke to the applicant who was seated to my left, and he's agreed to, uh, put the pool equipment in the conforming location eighty-five feet off the lot line.
Parker, please put up the survey, please.
With respect to, uh, variance number one on the swimming pool, uh, as you're fully aware, as I just heard you discuss that.
Wrong ones, Parker.
We got one oh five.
Uh, as you can see from, uh, the pool on the screen, as you just discussed, the, uh, the swimming pool is not overly large, we're proposing a fourteen by twenty-four in-ground swimming pool, have the concrete wall with the vinyl liner, uh, generally will be at grade, so it's not gonna be sticking up protruding uh, visible to any neighbors unless they carry a pier over fence in the twenty-foot trees in the rear. Um, as you can see, we're maintaining a ten-foot separation between the dwelling structure and the pool itself as required by New York State and Village Code, and that necessitates the request for the, uh, relaxation on the north side from twenty feet down to sixteen. Once again, I did not want to, uh, propose a pool that was overly large and would require a second request for a relaxation on the east, we're maintaining that twenty-foot setback, uh, to the rear yard. Again, applicant trying to, uh, comply as best he can. Uh, as you saw a moment ago on the screen, we're keeping the nature and character there. There are several other pools, there's one immediately behind us, as you know, there's another one, of course, just down the block. Not counting the proposed pool, um, and aerial, we would detect, you know, several pools in the area. Uh, we believe the installation pool's not gonna create an adverse, not gonna create an adverse environmental impact, um, and it's, uh, you know, a diminutive request in, in our view, considering that we didn't walk in and ask for a twenty-foot wide pool and a, and a ten-foot relaxation. Uh, of course, you can always say that it is self-created, it's hardship, um, because we're asking to do something that we know violates the code. Um, but there really is no other way, uh, no other place in the backyard to put the pool. You can't put it in the back because we would have greater relaxations either to the house or to the east property line. So overall, we've presented a, a good location for the pool, I think we've made it easy on the board, uh, to grant the applicant this application. If you have any other further questions, we certainly can answer them. On the variances, on the fence issue that I heard you speak of, I wanna point out to the board that, um, the fence to the bottom right of the screen you're looking at now, uh, where it appears the, the fence is outside of the applicant's lot line, um, that is not his fence, that is the joining neighbor's fence to the east. So technically, the neighbor's fence on the neighbor's lot line. Because the pool will be self-enclosed, if you kinda look just about the middle of, uh, depicted screen, right, where it says garage, and you follow the line of garage to the east or to the right, to the backyard, you see the enclosing fence right there is proposed. Um, I believe just a little mistake with the survey, it is not proposed to be a chain link fence, it's going to be what's known as an estate fence. Uh, I'm sure you've seen them, it used to be known as wrought iron, nobody uses wrought iron anymore, they're all aluminum. Uh, generally, that, uh, fence will be, uh, visible through, you can have a line of sight going through it, it will not be opaque. The fence, uh, the six-foot PVC fence that running along the backyard there, uh, is behind a, a large row of cement all variety and some pepper breeds, it was fifteen, twenty feet tall. And then on the north side, uh, that chain link fence that exists is going to be swapped out and changed, and then across, across the front, the same. So we will have code-compliant fences all around the pool, uh, and with respect to the, the staff note on that one fence, hopefully I clarify that issue, that it is not the applicant's fence that is on the neighbor's property, it is the neighbor's fence on his own property.
Just wanna revisit, uh, variance number two, which is, uh, you're just going to leave the, the pool equipment where it is, and you're gonna just move it to the five-foot requirement.
Move it to the south two or three.
Okay.
It'll comply.
Okay.
As you, as you can see from the depiction, the fence itself is already off the lot line, you know, by a foot or so. It is my understanding that the neighbor to the north has a shed in that vicinity, um, so we were figuring we're just gonna be right behind his shed. We did hear the concerns of the board and the members as you were discussing it, it's easy enough for us to, to, to move, you know, back and, and hopefully make the decision to grant the application. A lot easier about only asking for variance number one.
Okay, and Parker, do me if I would bring up the aerial for that, please? And zoom in.
You look, you look up the lot line, you can kinda see the neighbor's got a little structure out there.
Okay, good.
And if you wanna get it back, we'll take it. Look on the subject premises, please.
Does the board have any questions or comments for this applicant?
Why is the fire pitch being?
You know what, I, with my understanding that the whole backyard is being renovated and, you know, the applicant doesn't want the fire pitch to give this, I mean, at the moment, it's a correction. No longer going to use it anyway, I mean, he could file a permit for it, but I, as far as I know, I agree with going, uh, as part of the whole renovation.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for this applicant? Any other questions or comments? Alright, I'm gonna open this up to the public, is there anyone here that would like to speak on this application? Going once, going twice. Alright, um, if we have no other questions or comments for this application, do you have anything else you'd like to add for the record? Okay, um, this is a type two under, action under SECR, uh, Cindy, can you confirm that the applicant has, I wish, should've asked this first, but all the notifications? And, uh, mail links? Okay, everything's been, um, okay, excellent. You've answered all our questions, uh, with that being said, I'm gonna make a motion that we close this hearing, do I have a second? Second by Tracy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you very much for your time. Yes, you too. Alright. Fun, 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 alright. Yeah, yeah, alright. Second hearing tonight is one twenty-four dash one twenty-six, East Main Street, this is a holdover from last, from July's meeting? We do not have a meeting list? Um. Am I, oh, apologize, sir. Give me. Oh, no, sorry, one hundred, I apologize, I jumped ahead. Of course, absolutely. Um, one hundred Roosevelt, appeal number ZB dash ZB zero zero one two dash twenty-four, Suffolk County Tax Map zero two zero six dash fifteen dash five dash twenty-three. Zoning is, uh, RB two residential district, it's location on southwest corner of Old Post, at Old Post and Roosevelt. Property, property owner is Stanley J. Classic Junior and Alyssa Classic. Uh, applicant is Brookhaven Expediter's care, I'm sorry, property owner is Stanley Classic and Alyssa Classic. Applicant is Brookhaven Expedite's care of Andrew Malguanera, contact is Brookhaven Expedite's care of Andrew Malguanera. Description is proposed twelve by twenty-four in-ground swimming pool, action is public hearing adjourned from seven twenty-four. Bear with me, we're gonna be here a few minutes reading in variances, we have, perfect, we have ten variances. Ten, I'm sorry, eight or ten, Dan, I thought we had.
There's ten.
Ten, cause there's only.
There was twelve, they eliminated two.
Right, so, so Dan, I'm sorry, everyone, could you come, Dan, could you come forward here for a second? Um. Eight variances listed, I thought we had ten.
We do, this was basically one problem.
Okay. Okay, so we'll handle it, we'll handle this part of the hearing, sure. Yep, okay, alright, just wanna make sure I'm following procedure. I apologize, uh, variance number one, pursuant to Village Code, section two fifty dash eleven, section three, uh, section C. Two fifty dash eleven C, section three, subsection A, proposed swimming pool is thirteen feet from the rear of the property line where twenty feet is required. Variance number two, pursuant to the Village Code, section two fifty dash eleven C, subsection three, part A, proposed swimming pool partially resides within front yard where it is prohibited. Variance number three, pursuant to Village Code, section two fifty dash eleven C, section three, part B. Proposed pool is required to be enclosed by a fence no less than five feet nor, no less than five feet nor more than six and a half feet in height. The proposed fence along the eastern side of the property is four feet in height, variance. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna update that as part of the hearing. Pursuant to Village Code, section two fifty dash eleven C, section three, part B, proposed pool is required to be enclosed by a fence no less than five feet nor than six and a half feet in height, the proposed fence along the northwestern portion of the property is three feet in height. Variance number five, pursuant to the Village Code, section two, Village section two fifty dash twenty-eight A, section, section one, subsection C, part four, all active accessory structures shall be set back to a minimum of ten feet from any lot line and at least ten feet from the principal building. The proposed swimming pool, which is considered to be an active accessory use pursuant to two fifty dash nine definitions, is located six feet from the western side of the single-family residence where a minimum setback of ten is required. Variance number six, pursuant to Village Code, section two fifty dash twenty-eight A, subsection B, I'm sorry, part one, section B, subsection two. All passive excessive structures are required to be five feet from rear inside property lines and are prohibited from being within either front yard. The existing eight point three feet by, by ten point three frame shed is located three point one feet north of the rear yard. Variance number seven, pursuant to Village Code, section two fifty dash twenty-eight A, part one, section B, subsection two, all passive structures are required to be five feet from the rear inside property lines and are prohibited from being within either the front yard. The existing ACC unit is located within the front yard on the north side. Variance number eight, pursuant to Village Code, section fee, section two fifty dash twenty-eight A, part, sec, two, dash twenty-eight A, section one, part B, sec, subsection two, all passive accessory structures are required to be five feet from the rear inside property lines and prohibited from being within either front yard, the proposed swimming pool mechanical equipment is located in the front yard. I apologize for everyone that had to listen to that, that was horrible. Uh, before you start, Dan, um, there is a change to this application with regard to the number of variants, I'm just, Andrew, I'm gonna have just him update the application before you speak, so this way we're all know what the variances are, so Dan, if you can come forward, stand where Andrew is and just give us a uh, updated, uh, just for the record, uh, this application started out with eight variances, uh, the planning board has been, planning department has been working with the applicant, and, uh, due to some changes, we've had some additional variances, and we have some removal of other ones. Dan is going to give us an update, go ahead, Dan. And due to some changes, we've had some additional variances and we have some removal of other ones. Dan is going to give us an update. Go ahead, Dan.
The zoning board, thank you very much. Dan Gross, senior planner for the village. So would you prefer we go through each variance and updates for each?
Tell us just what was removed and what we're adding.
Sure. So. For the first, so there's a couple of variants that were changed. The first one had to do with the rear yard setback. So previously. Was twenty feet from the rear yard property line. The proposed pool was previously thirteen feet from the rear yard requiring a seven-foot variance. It has now been slightly relocated, sorry, slightly.
Okay, buddy.
Getting slightly, so instead of. Twelve feet, so the variance has increased from seven feet to eight feet, that is from the rear property line. Alongside with that, the front yard, oh, that remains the same. The next two changes had to do with fence heights, so previously we mentioned that there was variances three and four regarding the fence height was not compliant with the pool code fencing. The revised survey that the applicant submitted has indicated that they are now, have revised the fence to now meet the appropriate height. So three and four were eliminated as part of the revisions. Jumping ahead from there, variance five was also changed, so that was a setback since from the principal structure. With the pool now being relocated twelve feet from their property line as opposed to thirteen, the setback from the principal structure has increased from six feet to seven. So the previously they needed a four. Three-foot variance from the principal structure, because ten foot is the minimum required for the code.
And that was due to comments that the board made last.
Yeah, it was, yes, the board had requested additional space between the residence and the pool.
Perfect, go ahead.
All right, so then variance number, so variance number nine was not previously indicated, but. On the previous application form, but I know they, but we included as part of this today. It was friends still looking with the front yard may not exceed three feet in height.
Dan, slow down, you're, she's having trouble keeping up with you and I'm having trouble, so just take a deep breath, we're. You're not in trouble here, I promise, promise.
So variance number nine, this is mentioned during the previous review, but we're formalizing it as part of this one. This was for fences in the front yard. Two fifty twenty-eight C four A requires that fences located within the front yard may not exceed three feet in height. They must be also be made of open wood type construction. There is a proposed four-foot fence or existing along the Roosevelt Avenue frontage exceeding both the print and height and the construction type. So that is requiring a variance from the code. The next three variances are new as part of this application. So if you look at the survey, you'll note in the, as we talked about a little earlier, the northwest quarter, there is now a pool, at least in terms of height. Code compliant fence that has been proposed, because this is within the old post frontage, technically all three of those sides of the fencing, so that's the eastern, the northern, and the western. Do require variances from the code, so that's section two fifty twenty-eight C four A. Again, with the fences in the front yard cannot exceed three feet in height, must be open wood type, open wood type construction. These are not of open wood type construction and they are over the three-foot requirement. Though. Made to address the concerns of the pool code, which is a state code requirement, so that's where tip variances ten, eleven, and twelve come from.
And Dan, the applicant is aware of ten, eleven, and twelve being added to his application or to his hearing tonight?
I believe it's the hearing tonight, it was part of the staff report.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it got sent out a little later than we were hoping, but.
Okay. And at some point we'll have the, and we'll have the application amended to include these going from this, from this moment forward, I guess, or?
Yeah. Where the inclusion of a revised, just application form to clearly indicate the variances as they're currently presented, unless there's any changes discussed tonight. And the other one was inclusion of a revised survey showing the setbacks to the pool from the principal residence adjacent structures. Some of those appear to be missing as part of the submission, so we wanted to make sure those were covered as part of the record before the board makes a formal determination.
All right, excellent, thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
Andrew, you want to come forward? A couple of questions, just housekeeping stuff. You were made aware of these new variances?
I was today, yeah. It's all right.
Because we've added three more, you're okay to present tonight? You're not, you're not going to need any additional time? That, that going forward, just be one in, please?
I do.
Cindy, we're all good with notifications and everything, right? Excellent. Andrew, please proceed.
All right, Andrew Malguanera for the applicant. So. Hearing, this is, you know, there's a lot going on here, but it is, it looks, it looks worse than it actually is, as you can see. Pool, the location is the only spot you could possibly put it, it's slightly in the front yard, because. At the end of the day. And we're only slightly in the front yard. The, the fencing that was added to this application is, you know, part of the pool code regardless. And would be on any, any property that has a pool, five-foot fence, even if the pool wasn't there, any corner lot would have a six-foot fence for privacy purposes, you know, legal or not. People, you know, every corner lot has a six-foot fence for privacy sake. So I don't think that's abnormal for any corner lot in, in the village or anywhere in Brookhaven for that matter. And I presented the board with pictures of the property showing this property is full. From the neighbor, from Old Post, you would never even know there's anything back here regardless. So this pool could be in the, you know, up against Old Post, you wouldn't even see it. So there'd be no effect whatsoever, the neighbor will not be affected. The pool equipment is the optimal spot for the neighbor, as if it was to code and back towards the house, it'd be closer to the neighbor's house. Where it is located, proposed, it is away from the neighbor. So he, you know, it only benefits him for the pool equipment to be located in that corner where, where you see it again, fully vegetated, can't, you know, no visibility whatsoever and no effect at all.
And no vegetation will be removed during the construction?
No. On top. The pool, you know, as I said, it's not, it's not a big pool. Small by pool standards, so we're not even going aggressive like the other guy, I, I'd, of the other Roosevelt. Where I think we're being realistic here with what we're asking for and if the board has any other questions.
Cindy, we have pictures provided by the applicant, can we make them the next sequential exhibit in the file, please? I need them all down here, I haven't shown them. Does the board have any questions for this applicant? Okay, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this application? Going once? Going twice? All right, seeing none and hearing none, one more time, is there anyone that would like to speak on this application from the board?
Survey. A shed. In the southern.
There was another shed that was closest to the property line, that shed remains.
But since you were here last time, you have made a change in this.
Yes, yes.
And this is the updated survey?
It is.
Any further questions or comments from anyone on the board?
I actually have one question. The fence that's in the front yard in reviewing the photos, it looks like it's a swaling fence, if that describes it.
That's going to be removed.
Okay.
Yeah. As part of this application.
Okay.
Yeah.
For the record, this is a type two action under SECR. Andrew, did you give a copy of staff's report? I'm assuming. Andrew, just bear with me a second, I got, I had a draft report, so I just want to make sure there's no changes in it.
Absolutely.
One last time, is there any other questions or comments? Seeing none and hearing, I'm going to make a motion that we close this hearing with, and I'm closing this hearing with the applicant, with the application being updated to, and I want to make ten variances as presented by staff. And Andrew, you'll work with staff to give us an amended application or revised application?
Absolutely.
Okay. That being said, do I have a second on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Have a good night.
You too. For the record, Amy, if he was a gentleman, he would let you go first. All right, last application on the agenda this evening. This is also a holdover from July twenty-fourth. Is there anybody on the board that's?
Yes, you want to open it and then I recuse myself.
All right. One twenty-four dash one twenty-six East Main Street, appeal number ZB dash eighteen dash twenty-five. Two, Suffolk County Tax Map number two oh six dash twelve dash two dash twenty-five. Zoning is C one central commercial district, location is west side of East Main Street. Property owner is Port Jeff Premier Holdings, applicant is Port Jeff Premier Holdings care of Richard Albano. Contact is Wood Hall Expediting care of Amy DeVito. Existing description is existing mixed-use building, action is a public hearing. We have three variances tonight, the proposed project requires the following variances under the Village Code. Variance one, existing retail space of two hundred and ninety-nine square feet where a minimum of eight hundred square feet is required. Variance number two, existing retail space of four hundred and forty-seven square feet where eight hundred feet is required. Variance number three, existing three hundred and eighteen square foot apartment where minimum of four hundred feet is required.
As the broker record on this transaction for this property owner, I'm going to recuse myself.
Excellent, you can take a seat in the audience. Cindy, do we have all the notifications on this? Okay. Amy, can you be sworn in, please?
I do.
All right, and Amy, did you get a copy?
I did.
Okay.
I did. Is this working?
Good. Go ahead, Amy, you may, this is again, this is a holdover from July twenty-fourth.
So, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We had specifically held over the case to address the encroachment of the fencing that was on the property. As well as an AC unit. So originally when Mr. Albano had reached out to Claudia. Who was the agent representing Danford's, I think she identified herself as the general manager. She had expressed some concerns about access across. Property across theirs to reach the Baker's Alley staircase. So Mr. Claudia on several occasions to no avail. He then ended up speaking to, I guess, what I'll say for lack of a better term, the higher-ups. And, and was able to begin a resolution for this matter. So I had just received. Between hearings a few minutes ago, but I will give this up to the board. But before I do, this is a letter from William. From William Walker dated September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. To my client, Richard Albano. Where. This email. I'll just read it for the record. It says, hi Rich, and let me just identify him actually, so. Management for. Proka Chiyan, Chiyanzi. Which is the. Danford's and operates Danford's. It says, hi Rich, I just wanted to thank you for moving the fence from our. Door property located at one twenty-four East Main Street. Our. We have discussed. And access. The backside of your. So, so this was just yesterday. A copy of the. Alley staircase, so I'll hand this up to the board.
Okay, and it's your testimony that your client has removed the fence as per the email? Just say that for the record on the.
That is correct.
Thank you.
We also submitted a survey.
I'm sorry, Amy, before you go forward.
Oh, sure.
The picture that you provided here depicts, tell me, tell me what I'm looking at here.
Fence being relocated.
Okay, so this is the new location of the fence on your, on your client's property.
Just want to add that the. We had prepared. Reflect the fence's location, we. The access agreement.
All right, Cindy, we're going to make this email an exhibit in the file, please, whatever, exhibit A. Does anybody else want to see this? Everyone wants to see the picture? Continue, Amy.
Okay, so it's been a couple. Mind the board. And just. Was. Exactly changed and what exactly did. Point and said. This is Mr. Albano's position. Alterations and proceed through the. Get him from point A to. Ninety, that said. On the front ground level. Which we did. Shows. So. Then some. To something that could have potentially went litigious, it was just agreed that we, and settled. Armits to satisfy the village, so it's really. Changed as far. The sizes of these retail. The apartments may trigger various. From. Client purchasing the property.
Okay.
That's it.
So. Two stores in the front are currently occupied and rented, am I correct?
That is correct. All from last time. The. Right side of the building is actually.
Correct.
The storefront on the left side is like a. All sorts of wellness type things, so it's a little retail store.
My, my concern is, Amy, and not so much the retail, because although small, it's, it's consistent with the village is trying to do. And, and the issue I have is with the three hundred and eighteen square foot apartment. I understand your testimony is that that's not your client's doing, it was there or pre-existing. There's some differences of opinion between him and the building inspector, but the three hundred and eighteen kind of, I'll be honest with you, it kind of scares me a little bit. Three hundred and eighteen is less than twenty by twenty, take out a bathroom and a kitchenette, you're really super tiny. I understand your client's desire to have two. I understand your client's desire to have two apartments, twice, double the rent. But, you know, I really kinda have a, I, I'm just speaking for myself, not speaking for the board. That three hundred and eighteen's kinda small and I'm always looking at the precedent. The precedent is, you know, that, you know, why, then we got a whole bunch of people chopping up three hundred and eighteen and coming to me and going, "You approved a three hundred and eighteen for someone else," and that's what scares me. But that's just me talking, I can't speak for the rest of the board. Is there anybody on the board that'd like to comment or have any questions or questions on this? Would your, you know, I hate to. There was a, there was a conversation earlier about possibly combining that one with another apartment?
Yes, I'm trying to, it's been two months, so I'm trying to remember.
Sure, no problem, I understand.
I believe it was apartment one that was undersized.
Where was it?
Apartment two, rather, sorry.
Yeah, apartment.
Yes.
Studio.
And I don't. I don't know, maybe Dan, you could correct me if I'm wrong, I don't remember, I don't recall. Let me just, I just want to compare something before I answer.
Sure.
Was apartment two. And the old. I can't recall what the actual change was, so we had. Don't think the layout actually changed from these plans that were on file from nineteen ninety with the village. It was in, I think, twenty twenty-three.
Dan, can you come forward and just speak to this for a second?
I'm sure you're trying to remember too, Dan, because. Yeah, so this is, this is the studio, right?
What, hold on one second, do we wanna, do we wanna take a quick five-minute recess just to let the applicant look through our paperwork, it's a holdover? And that'll give me an opportunity. All right, we're gonna take a, I'm gonna make a motion that we take a five-minute recess. Just. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so. Jim, since you're here.
I know, it's, I know.
Make a motion that we reopen the hearing, do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Amy, I'm gonna let you start, and then I have some questions, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving us that few minutes to reconnect the dots. It's, it's been sixty days since the last hearing and I just had to repamperize myself. So. We just went over the floor plan, Dan and I, and the, the. The apartment that is three hundred and eighteen square feet currently is the studio apartment known as apartment two. This apartment is located in what we consider the basement part of the building, so. East main and the parking lot area. So. Apartment. Remains the same, it's just the. There was. Apartment two, which had a. Floor plan, you can see where it is. Was added the laundry room to service both low. The. The square. The. By six feet or maybe. So. Well, with six times five, yeah, so. And.
Fifty square feet. Dan, can you just, for the record, come on. The existing CEU that we have for this studio apartment, does it list the square footage on it?
It does not.
It does not, just listed as a studio apartment?
It just lists the use, I think, I believe it says the, I had it written down, but it's just the, it mentions the apartments in the general commercial and calls it.
No square, no square footage?
No square footage on the CEU.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, unfortunately, the plan for some reason. Footage for that particular area.
Yes.
So. Which is why challenging transaction to get through because there is a lot of unknowns, we are just going. Hundred and eighteen square feet today. Higher back in nineteen ninety when the CEU was issued. Us, and that is because the laundry service both apartments one and two.
And laundry, laundry room was added by?
I'm not sure if Mr. Albano added it or a prior owner.
Okay.
That I can't answer certainly, so.
Do you have anything else, Amy?
No, that's it.
Is there anyone on the board that would like to ask questions of the applicant?
Retail since you. Still undersized on the commercial use aspect, or the, the area two hundred and ninety-nine square feet on the retail one. Forty-seven on retail two, right, no changes to that?
The only. Since we had started this application process, the, what I'll call. So, it's. By a real estate office. But from, you know, my memory and just from looking at, you know, old photos from street view, for many years. This has. Storefronts, so, and, and that has not changed, the configuration.
Any other questions or comments from anybody?
I just want to add one more thing, I'm so sorry. Far as the size of these, you know, retail and or office units, you know, nowadays with everything that has changed in the world, people don't necessarily. Resources to rent larger retail. These are actually a really good size and from the point that Mr. Albano has owned the property have. Which is a very. Village, as we all know, so. I mean, I, I lived on East Main Street back in two thousand and five for several years. As far as my memory, definitely. Thousand and five. I, and I wonder if this went back further. No, that was two thousand and nine. I wasn't really. How the. With the two doors kinda side by side and how it's, it's. In two thousand and five. Storefronts because of. And you can see that on the plan, actually.
Amy, you're aware that even though if, depending on what decision the board. Applicant, you're out. Your client would be, may be required to go to the building, may be required to go to the planning board?
Yes.
Okay, to address any issues? We talked about the encroachment issue, you're in the process of resolving that.
Yes.
Any resolution of permits and violations, you know, he's gonna have to take care of at some point with all this as well? And updating plans and.
Correct.
You know, most accurate plans and dealing with that. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Antonio?
The. To the commercial floor area. As it's phrased is for each new. Petitioned, commercial use, okay? And. Right? Have not changed and, or based on the nineteen ninety plans that we have, is that correct? Accurate with respect? I know. With respect to the residential units, but what, what about the plans with respect to the commercial?
Hold that one, Parker, do we have the nineteen ninety plans we can throw up? Thank you. Got Amy, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. So, if you look. Twenty plans, you could see that there's store one and store two on them. You can also see an. Again, no idea. But the whole. Plans, the foyer that leads to the staircase. So. Extreme.
The door, the doorway.
Yes.
Entering the commercial unit.
And Amy, that's up on the screen, the nineteen ninety plan. Nineteen ninety plan that you just put up, okay? You confirmed it. It looks like your client added a foyer, lack of a better phrase, on the two store. Two, I can't see how it's labeled one, I'll say it's store two. Looks like we added a vestibule to get to the.
Well, no, because according to that. Line is what that is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so. Extremely unclear, we don't really know, did that mean it was existing, did that mean it was being proposed at that time? Did it, the. The. There's just a lot of questions about these. With all. Look at them, there are, I mean, even with. See on the plans today. And. It's not sure. Doesn't. Based on these plans.
So, it looks like from the nineteen ninety to the, now, at least the store sizes didn't change much other than the question about what was going on with the vestibule area.
Correct.
So.
Yes, because in store number one, that little. I think it says lavatory, I'm having a very hard time seeing this.
Yep, looks like lavatory.
Yeah, so that, that was. That used to be in, in, or I. Store number one, that's actually. Which would. Footage of store.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on this application? Seeing none, hearing none? One last time, is there anybody else that'd like to speak on this application from the board? Nope. All right, I'm gonna make a motion that we close this hearing, do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, this is a type-two action under SECR.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Cindy, we're just gonna pick one oh five Roosevelt. You have to walk through the criteria. For the record, variance number two is now eliminated, the applicant has stated that he will move the full equipment accordingly. Five foot requirement from the. Side yard setback, so the only variance we have is four foot. Four foot deduction and the variance for twenty feet.
Yep.
The applicant stated that he will address all the potential issues. Please start work session. Anybody have any questions or comments? I'm not gonna walk through the criteria, it's the applicant's for us. That being said. Make a motion that we approve this application. Variance, for variance one only, for the side yard setback. Two, two.
Good night.
Good night.
Get home safe, John.
Two fifty dash eleven C three A. Room rules must be set back a minimum of twenty feet from any prevalent post, located approximately sixteen feet from the north property line. Four foot variance, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this variance, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, that's building, that's building code, he's gonna be required to do all that. They need to speak up. Slowly, slowly.
I didn't have it today, I'm just diaper. No, no, the only thing I wanted to mention was the, about the survey, I don't know if the board wants a revised survey showing the equipment compliant location.
I've got there yet, so.
Oh.
Okay, so. I was gonna make a condition that the variance number two, which would not, that the applicant provided the building department slash finding department updated survey with the five foot requirement. That'll be a condition of variance, because we don't have a, make a condition of variance, we may provide a updated survey. Everybody did state it for the record, so we are removing variance number two, so, and we're not voting on it, so if he decides to do it. All right, sit there, don't go nowhere, you're staying there, don't worry. I would like to go to one oh, one twenty-four first, because one hundred makes my head hurt. So Lexi, you have to comment on this. I don't have a problem with the retail space, because based on the nineteen ninety plans, pretty consistent. But I don't think the, I don't think the space increased or decreased so significantly in the retail space. I have a problem with the three hundred and eighteen square feet in that, no one can. It just says studio apartment. Studio, I mean, part of it's on the village and the fact that we don't have, someone didn't list the square footage or at least approximate square footage. So. But the applicant did make the apartment, did, but he did go from a three fifty to three eighteen, which was her statement on the record. She couldn't tell us that Albano didn't do it, let's just say that.
Exactly.
So he went from three fifty, three fifty to three eighteen, plus or plus or minus. So, I mean, I have a problem with the degree of non-compliance, and I'm sure that someone could tell me more, but we have issues here. So I have a problem with that, but that's just me speaking, does anybody else have any?
Except for the laundry room.
Yeah, it has changed.
And so that's the thing, for me, it's like, I wouldn't have an issue with.
The degree of non.
That's, that's exactly.
You were close to it, now you've increased the degree of non-compliance.
Exactly.
From the nineteen ninety to now.
Because I wouldn't be worried about the presidents we're setting if they maintained the, whatever the square footage had been, but now you've actually reduced it.
Right.
She said he put the laundry room, we did not, she didn't know.
She didn't know.
She, she couldn't say definitively that her client did modify it, so.
So can you, can you condition it on him adding that, that you now.
I could theoretically do that.
Or you could just approve it for whatever square footage you'd be getting back by getting rid of the laundry room, approve it for that much.
Yeah, I mean, you could do that. Well, but he's. No, you don't have. And again, I go back to, I don't, four hundred's small, I'm not saying that four hundred isn't small, but at least that's village code. And you, you could put a whole bunch of four hundred square foot apartments throughout the village if you wanted to, but at least that's village code, that's not. But I feel like by going to three eighteen, which you're taking off, let's say twenty percent from the village code, right, roughly twenty percent. Twenty-five percent.
So I'm not giving an opinion, I've consulted with counsel and I can, I can provide facts. I've consulted with counsel and I can provide facts, not opinion, I can in fact tell you that that laundry room was in existence when this gentleman acquired the property. Whether or not it was in existence when the CEU or anything like that, I can't tell you, but I can tell you that that laundry room was there when Mr. Albano acquired the property.
Yes, no, maybe you're still, you know, still increasing the degree of non, you know, I know we're holding, I know we're holding. Only can't be responsible for sins of other people, but.
But we haven't even given him a chance to like maybe find some.
With all due respect, this is just.
He used to own this building and no longer.
Well, she writes a letter then, that's, I'll tell you, I'll leave that right.
Turn Leighton in. Around longer than the Leighton, this was their building.
No, she lived on, she lived on the corner, said the builder's. You know that building?
Oh, Camp, not Camp.
Campbell, that office.
But to you, but to your point, you've had two public. To your point to prove that, or you've had two public hearings in three months to, it's not our job to tell you what, what we want, it's your job to bring it, you know, I mean, it's. I mean, you had a hearing, you had it open, you knew, you know.
It's gonna go, yeah, go to the planning board. It was a. Because it's technically changed to a commercial property, village code is very inclusive about what constitutes a change to a, A, a conditional use, B, a commercial, non-resident, single-family home property in the village, so. Because there was substantial change to it, that's why.
What was the change?
Basically the renovation, so the prior, this is based on the prior building inspector's interpretation, that the level of renovation of the property was considered, they called it an R three, I believe is the classification.
Is the building inspector claiming that more than fifty percent of the original structure had been modified by.
Yeah, but he just showed you.
There was.
Put your windows in, I mean, you've changed, doing the windows is a, is a change, even though you kept the same format, even though you changed windows, it's considered a structural life change.
Replacing? Hmm? Replacing?
No, replacing.
Yeah, I believe it's replacing.
That's why you have to get a building, because it's considered a structural renovation, I mean, window, yeah, window is a structural.
That's what I was gonna ask you, because we, we kind of left it open, even in this. It was basically the board may wish to consider conditioning it if required, we did ultimately want to talk to counsel about. Planning board, the village code just tends to, it says change, changes reconstruction, it's very inclusive about what's considered planning board review, so that's why.
Listen, this is just, I mean, this is. He did a lot.
Yeah, I will. I will.
Windows sliding through outdoor outside.
But you're, you're still, you're still the permit. Yeah, you still need a. It's a mixed-use building that's conditional too, that's a.
That was just, but it is. Yes, but forgive. Hence the reason why we exist.
So the zoning board refer to the planning board and it's possible.
Say that again.
Which is a conditional use in the district, so conditional use technically needs planning board approval to get approved anywhere. The way the C one district code is written is almost too, in, theoretically in efforts to legalize a lot of the mixed-use structures, to make it possible within the code, but also with some consideration. Because basically it just means it has to meet certain criteria under the village code to make that conversion to a mixed-use, if it's a new one, or if it's an existing one, there's certain conditions it makes. I think because of where we are right now, it just requires a public hearing and then making sure they conform with those other requirements, I just don't have them in front of me, but that technically usually triggers planning board. So CEU, that's to legalize, yeah, existing uses on the property, but again. It is, and that's why we're not arguing even the uses of the property, it's because you're changing it, it's substantial, if, I gotta pull up the code, and it's about, it's changes.
Not a change of. Cultural changes that took place.
To a non-single-family residence.
I'm gonna let you know, he does just everything, he's trying to get you on your heels, don't be nervous.
No. I'm, I'm.
Relax.
I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to answer. It feels so good. It, it's structural changes, that's why, so a single family, non-single-family residence.
It's on the record now, by the way.
That's a great.
Kind of amount, but.
So Jim.
I agree, I don't understand why we're here.
Yes. Why? What does it say, Amy, is it?
So Matt.
Because the ex-building inspector.
Don't understand why we're here.
Okay.
But what?
You know, we were. The only thing that I can find. And he knew.
He did.
He did, I know he did, yeah.
And nobody picked up on it.
I, well, I heard it, I was. Gonna bring up is where this came from, and again, it was really the interpretation of that code back when it was reviewed by the building inspector, because of the level of renovation that was conducted, it basically becomes a new building and that's basically. Building code, so, but you're right. Yes. It's just. And it tells you where they're. Two apartments and two retail?
There's two apartments on the ground, rear ground.
Okay, yeah, alright, good, good.
Two apartments, yes, four.
Two on the ground and two.
It's very specific, yeah.
Four apartments, two retail. I mean, it could play around.
And that's the thing, right, is that we're not arguing the use.
Is that Kevin's signature?
No. Vito.
But he didn't change, like, inside, well.
But he, somebody did.
The laundry room's there.
Right.
Keep going, Parker.
Oh, you're back up, whoa, 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 slow down there. All right, it's underwriting, it's here, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, hold on.
That's for the air conditioning. Yeah, it's electric, yeah.
He did.
Yeah, keep going there.
Can I give more fact, counsel? Ceiling was collapsing, there was, I mean, he did the work, but he didn't alter the apartments per se, he made them habitable. It was, the retail space, the retail space was occupied by the upholstery woman. Illegally for eight years, it took me eight years to evict her, like, extension cords being run from. So, and then the other side she broke into, changed the locks and was using it as her storage space. It was always two separate retail spaces, we just couldn't get her out, to occupy or rent out that space.
The guy who owns the building now, the guy that was here last time?
Yes, that was Mr. Albano, yeah.
Well, this will be good, Matt Lock's got something.
So Lou Leighton applied for the CEU.
Yeah.
Okay, and the gentleman who owns the building now, acquired.
From the Leighton estate.
So counsel, let me ask you this question, going back to Matt Lock's comment here. If, so why, then why are we, are we only here because?
No, no. That was a.
Are we?
Harry Mason.
Um, you'll graduate this, okay, good night, so let me ask you, so, he's got four apartments, no one's questioning him.
Yeah.
But the fact that he has, the fact that he has three hundred and eighteen square feet on one of the apartments is what's driving us. So.
Well, but. The part, well, the.
She didn't know.
But the degree of non-compliance, whether it was a Leighton estate or it was Albano, although we have someone stating for a fact that it was an Albano, has increased the degree of non-conformity. So.
What, what is his recourse, though, if we don't approve this variance?
Exactly, he's got a completely non-compliant building.
He's gotta take out the wall and make it one apartment, well, but even if you do that, you're still not, you're still not really.
Never compliant. Exactly.
So maybe the laundry room, I think, is listed as six by six.
It's thirty-six square.
And you, and you wanna know what we would have had to grant him?
Yeah.
A certificate of existing use.
It's just a question of whether, and it doesn't seem like, it seemed like the square footage really didn't change too much.
Right, I mean, maybe by ten percent?
They were always non-conforming, the question is, when did the four hundred square feet requirement come into the code, and the question is, when did the eight hundred square foot requirement come into the code? And whether he predates that change in or.
He definitely predates the village, right?
Yeah. It's. Find that information.
Yeah, that's nineteen ninety.
Yeah.
So when did the code in order change that we had to have four hundred habitability, and when did the code change that we had to have eight hundred commercial, commercial space?
Good question.
Good question. Yeah.
Predates round metal.
Nineteen, early nineteen hundreds.
It is very characteristic of East Main Street, I mean, we. You know, and I meant, and I meant like, like, there's been an effort recently to legalize a lot of what's there, and a lot of applicants becoming owner, property owners, be, for update COs and other things, and there's cases where we have documentation showing the size that hasn't changed and there wasn't substantial renovation. There, there, there's examples of when fires happened on East Main Street, and the, we got a CO for a fire, but it never included the specific areas, so we could, had to go out, confirm the areas haven't changed, and, you know, that was the case. The, I mean, I know my understanding for this, and again, why we brought it forward was because of A, that building inspector interpretation, B, stipulated settlement that was done between the applicant and the village and to legalize what's on the property. I mean, if, I know, the hearing is closed, so there's sixty-two.
Back up for a sec, hold on.
Yes.
The stipulated settlement between the village.
Yes.
Does that, what is, and I guess this is really Jim's question, is what does that say, is just that we're looking to legalize what's there now?
Dave Hannah left, do you even know who Hannah left?
Is that a? It was a David?
Yeah, I think maybe we need a copy of that, because if that setting is just legalizing the four existing apartments that are there. Yeah, then that would really kind of tie our hands.
Yeah, I mean, also like.
Oh, wait, wait, I said, I told, I said, this could be done, get Matt Lock.
We've, we've, we've changed that, we don't feel he complies with Matt Lock, he's more Columbus. We've, we've, we've changed that. We don't feel he complies with Matt Lock. He's more Columba. A little sneaky, the cigarette, like.
Maybe my cousin pink.
Witness.
Yeah. If we can.
See the stipula- I'd like to see the agreement that the village signed because the village signed an agreement that said you do all this and we'll legalize the four apartments out. It may might say as is right now. It says that. If then we just. Legalize means a lot of different things. Doesn't just mean this. I'm not saying pass the buck, but at least say, okay, that was his agreement to get it to where it needs to be. When did that code come into effect?
I'm not worried.
I wrote, yeah, I know. I was trying to find.
That's your question.
Twenty square foot apartments everywhere because like new construction, we would never allow.
No, no, no. I, I got it. I got it. But you know, you've got all these old buildings.
No, I don't have it.
Yeah.
You've got all those old buildings that are being renovated. If you walk along, there one of them is the T place where I ran into Danielle and the kids one day. All those, everybody's renovating those buildings.
Yeah.
I just don't wanna be like, and they all have downstairs basements, you know? I don't want everybody to be like, oh, what are you doing for? Let's, instead of, let's take two, let's take an eight hundred square foot apartment and chop it up and, you know.
Well, hopefully we have, hopefully we, we'd have better documentation where we'd be able to see what the previous.
But you know, with the, with the state.
Hopefully, I'm saying hopefully.
I know.
So cute. I, I. Okay.
I even brought.
Um, but the, if the village has an agreement with him saying, you know, then at least you have a little more. So the next guy that comes in and says, I wanna three hundred, whoa, hold on, this was part of an agreement with the village, just, you know, type of thing.
But you don't think that this saying that there's two apartments downstairs, two up, that covers?
No, because I can, how do I know those apartments aren't ten square feet and four, nine hundred and seventy-two square? It just, just says quantity, it doesn't say size.
Boy, I mean, if you look at the.
Uh, I'm listening.
There's no way he could have reduced it that much. Like, if anything, he reduced it by probably thirty-six feet when he added, when he added the longer.
At the end of the day, I think these have changed drastically.
Right.
Other than the thirty-six square feet on the one. Um, I don't think, you know, it changed that drastically. Um. I don't think it's changed that drastically. I'm just, I've just, if, if there's a stipulation out there, let's, let's just throw it in for the record and let's find out the information that he. Well, I didn't say we were gonna fight against it. I might, I may or may not vote that way, you know? It doesn't mean that. Yeah, we just closed it with sixty-two days.
Yeah, the, yeah, you're sixty, yeah.
So we could, so at next meeting, he could have the stipulation and the, and the questions and answer Stipendiant's questions. Alright, so let's, unless somebody else has something to say, let's, uh, hold this open until next meeting, until Dan can get us the, you know, information we need.
In your.
Oh, wait.
Synopsis. That's for a hundred. This is, uh, one twenty-four, twenty-six.
Maybe we talked to the planning board. Even reviewing this.
Yeah. Yeah, do we, do we? Yeah.
Copy me on the email.
Yeah.
Yeah. He'll might know. But we don't have any site plan, site plans on the record, so.
So we don't. That's what I wanted to keep adding stuff. But I wanted to mention that we don't, and Cindy brought this up, we don't have a full of site plan on record at, at all on this property.
Okay, but in order to get this, somebody had to submit an affidavit.
Yeah.
That's. Street for a hundred and fifty years. And I saw this person, that person every morning, and they lived there and this store and that store in order to get this. Now, if you stop using that, you lose it.
Yeah.
Right. So here in your, in your synopsis, you say, or the coach should say, to permit a real retail tenant of approximately two hundred and ninety square feet, where a minimum of eight hundred. Still wanna know when that codified.
Yep.
For each new or partitioned commercial use. Each new.
Yeah.
What does that mean? What is new? A new business? Or because you've changed fifty percent, I've changed the wall from blue to red?
That was the prior interpretation. But you're right, we, I mean, again, we can get a second opinion.
Sure.
Um, that was the prior interpretation. Was that because of the level of change? I know, just, and, and, and I, and I can read you the code. The erection, addition, expansion, extension, division, or alteration, or reconstruction of all buildings, including those condos, it says, um, other than a single, one family detached dwelling.
Yeah, so you know, building file, cause this.
Yeah.
You don't have like the accompanying affidavits. Yeah, yeah. Or anything that, that supports the, this CEU.
I can go, I know we had very limited on record. I can, I can check.
But what he was showing us online, uh, on scrolling, uh, when you were scrolling through like the CEU receipt of fifty dollars, can you show us that again? It might be in there. Keep going and see if there's an aff- supporting affidavit that yielded that, yeah, keep going. No.
This is the nineteen ninety record.
Right, and you do have a receipt. That's a good sign. What else? The underwriters, keep going. Is there any? What's that? I affidavit. Betty. Oh, Betty. Been living here for a hundred and twenty-six years. Is that what that says? Wait, no, located a hundred and twenty, okay. I am present, thirty-four years. Two, four, sixty-three. And let me throw, and now, okay, now let's throw this out.
Now it's three, two, four.
Right, three, two, four. So did he have three apartments or four apartments? So maybe that three hundred and eighteen square foot apartment, and Alexi, don't beat me up, may have been part of one of the other apartments and now somebody chopped it up. And now. And now we need to know when square footage became a part of our code. Victor, this somehow concluded at a.
Would you also like to refer to the building?
Four apartments.
Hold that thought.
Four apartments and stores too.
Alright, so. Does it say multiple four, okay, I can. Multiple building, four apartment.
Yep.
Alright, so at least we solved that problem.
We got another one. We got.
Multiple dwellings, two stores, four apartment. Now, just for the record, look at that handwriting. Does it match? I, whatever. Alright, keep going. Is anything, any more affidavits? Why not? Let's just keep going now. Alright. What's that? Alright. What's this? Alright, so we, we are at least forced to, alright. Alright, so let's, let's hold this open till the next, till next month and we'll, uh, we'll revisit this. It predates round metal. Alright. Let's go to one oh, one hundred.
One hundred's the last one, yeah.
Let me give this back to them as immediately as possible.
Yeah.
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 Pictures make it look, like where, like, and you're not going to be removing those?
Yeah, right. That's what I said. I said, how are you gonna, that's what I said. Are you not gonna do it during the construction? No, I'm like.
What I concern to me is like them getting the excavator in there and in proximity to the dry well that they have right out the back of the house. Cause all I'm thinking is, oh, there's a problem.
Alright, so just let's talk about Roosevelt for a quick second. Wanna join us? Okay?
Yeah.
Alright, so there is.
I'll be, I'll be quiet.
According to, according to our council, um, the issues they're having with, that are on old posts with this retaining wall really don't preclude us from making any decisions. Um, that would all be part of his building permit at some point, so I'm gonna let them fight that battle out. Let's look at this application. Dan had a good point. Let's look at it as a whole. My mind. Hold on, please. Parker, what are we doing here? Work with me, please. The ma- the, the.
Survey.
The survey right here in front of us. Thank you. Um. Alright, so the AC, I don't have an issue with. The pool, the pool equipment, I don't necessarily have a po- a problem with. Um, because they're saying it's in the front yard. It's a corner lot, so we've dealt with this plenty of times.
And it's, it's as far away from his neighbor.
Yes.
The, the neighbor's house.
Yeah, it's more towards the front, wherever that patio is, closer to the patio. Um, the pool itself, we asked him, he made some changes. He was thirteen feet. He now went to twelve. He went a foot further away from the building. Um, that was at our request. Um. The fence in the front yard, the fence in the front yard, the fence in the front yard, which is like four of them. Um, I don't have an issue with, other than we threw out the chain link, you know, chain goes away, uh, building code will make sure that he puts in some type of approved appropriate fence for that. Um. Anybody got anything to say?
Oh, yeah, and then just because it's a side garden, there's all these issues with fencing, which he says are correct.
Listen, Dan, I think you said like, that they could move things around to decrease like their, it's like the severity of the variances and everything. Like how would they be positioned things to?
No, he's saying they did. They moved it an additional foot off of the back of the house.
Right.
I mentioned there might be.
Still gonna make them require variances, no matter what.
If you move it, if you move it up, but you got other variant, you know, it's, it's kinda one of those properties, you're just, every time you squeeze it, you always end up with a variant. It should go the other orientation. It said, I don't like this house at all for a pool. I think it's just trying to, you talk about shoehorning something in, but.
You don't have to live there.
That's exactly the answer. I wanted, I wanted the front yard. Seems like a lot of effort for a pool, but again, someone said, I don't live there. Um.
I mean, would we, you know, I think one of the unresolved things that you said was in here is that the, the pool is still at the proximity to the home, right? They moved it.
Right.
That's what I mean. Yeah, that's.
It's at seven point eight feet off of the foundation line.
Yep.
I mean, would we park further from the house if it's closer to the property?
I, I don't think you get, and let's put it this way. If you move, if you moved it, just say five feet off the property line, I'm not advocating for that. I, I think if you go five feet off the property line, you lose all those bushes because it's gonna be right on top of those, so you're ripping out all that. If you.
Now you're losing the property.
Right, and if you, if you even move it ten feet, what are you gaining by two feet? You know, I don't, I don't think you're, although I see your point, I, I just, I think you're trading one for the other. I think it's, I don't think you. You better put.
Inconvenience, inconvenience to the homeowner or? Yeah, well. This point, the, I would say protect the neighbor.
But are, are we weighing safety versus, like, is, is it unsafe or is that possible?
Um.
Just don't try too many.
I, I mean, unsafe in what way? Like, come out drunk, fall in the pool.
Yes, because like, yeah, somebody's walking next to the house, they fall in the pool.
In, in my neighborhood, they are all literally right next to it.
So you.
Never heard of anybody doing any of that.
I mean, there's obviously plenty of pools in this neighborhood. We just approved the same exact one, three houses down.
The house is from the nineteen thirties, but.
But take, take that into consideration. I think it's good where it is. There's nowhere to move it, right? It's either.
Uh, yeah, I don't think, again, I think if you're, if you move it one way, you, you, you're losing a variance and gaining another. I think you just. My, I think the one thing that we need to do, and Dan will take care of this for us, is he will make sure that the application gets, you know, to get rid of the old ones, because we, what it was advertised and now what it's ending up are different things. That's a, a number of issues. Does anybody have any questions or comments? No, not you, you know, anyone else have any? You'll, you'll get your chance, cause. Anybody else have anything to say? Go ahead, Antonio.
Thank you.
What you got?
So do we have to wait for Andrew to amend the application?
We can make a condition of the application. That's not.
You did, right? Okay. Yeah, yeah.
We can, we can just condition the application. Any other questions or comments?
Just the survey too. It's a survey that can show all the setbacks for the right variances. You might wanna update the survey.
So make it a condition. He updates the, the current, he updates the survey to reflect the variances that are, that are gonna be possibly written.
Yeah.
Update survey application.
And probably, and the removal of the, uh, the fencing too, that we indicated during the meeting. They said they're removing some of the, I think the front yard fence, what you're describing. They should probably show that on the survey, just so it's all.
Well, let us call it update the survey, i.e. fencing and.
Your intention to remove, just like the other one intended to remove the fire. You know, he's stating your intentions.
Yeah.
I was just about to say, where, where is the second shed?
It's removed.
One, it was.
If you look at the old survey, it was still on there. It's right here.
Right, right.
And they removed it, right? So they got rid of this one.
Okay.
And they kept that.
Hey, Parker, can you, uh, bring up the aerial, please?
It was.
Zoom in on this, please. Yeah, so there's the shed.
They got rid of it.
Parker, let me see the house adjacent next to it.
Well, it's still there on that aerial.
That's twenty-three. It's, yeah, it's here.
But it's, it's for, it's not on top of the house, like the, you know, the, the shed right now is, is got a nice buffer to it as far, and I mean, it's there's plenty of sheds. I don't find that egregious.
And the neighborhood, the complaint in regards to the pool equipment location, it's actually nowhere near an area that's going to be interfering with him. It's actually the best place to be. It's had, moved it, you know, even behind the garage, then it's right near his outdoor entertaining space.
Yeah, Dan said that.
You're so smart, Dan.
Good looking insworn, man. There's a, there's the package. You're gonna make a great chairman of them. I threatened with it all the time. Uh, alright, so just, does anybody else have any questions or comments on this application? Alright, so I'm gonna just walk through, I'm gonna, I'm, we're gonna go through the five criteria on the application as a whole. Parker, can you put the survey up again, please? Um, whether an undesirable change in a neighborhood be produced in the character of the neighborhood or the detriment to nearby property to be created by granting the area variance? No, for a number of reasons. Just to reflect it, uh, the pool equipment is as far away as possible. There are also a number of pools, including one oh five, which we just granted tonight in the neighborhood. Um, same size and same size and proximity to the main structure. So I'd, I'd say that there's no, no negative impact to the character of the neighborhood. The only, the only thing that makes us unique is because we have, uh, two front yards. Uh, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved in some other method, um, other than a variance, uh, due to the size of the property and the fact that it's a corner lot, no. Um, even with the board trying to shift it, um, there's always gonna be a variance of some degree. So whether the requested area is substantial, uh, I don't think any of them are, are substantial. Um, even the, even the, uh, off the house. I, I think by the fact that they're maybe mathematically, but I don't think they're inconsistent, especially with one oh five or any of the other ones. Uh, whether programs will have an adverse impact on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood. C one, the typical pool. And whether you allege difficulty is self-created. At that, it is by the nature of wanting. Yeah, so. Yeah. So, um, that being said, I'm gonna, if no one else has any questions or comments, I'm gonna walk through. But Dan, all of these are gonna have the same condition on them. I'm gonna do one, they're all gonna have the same condition, it's that they need to, and they need the application. Survey for the fencing and for to add the required requirements of the community, pro-houses, remove the fencing.
Guys.
So every one of them on these ten variances are gonna have that condition. Does the board agree with that? Okay. Alright, I'll put a walkthrough one at a time.
The very end has, uh, oh, you have the new one? So this one, this is for the road part.
Oh, okay, okay. Yep, yep. Yeah.
Bottom they start.
Yeah, alright. Alright, uh, variance number one, um. Section two fifty dash eleven, C three A, permit a propose, proposed in-ground pool that would be located twelve feet from the rear property line where a minimum of, well, a minimum setback of twenty is required. Make a motion that we approve variance number one. Do I have a second? where a minimum of twelve, a minimum setback of twenty is required, make a motion that we approve, variance number one, do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number one, with the two conditions previously stated. Number two, uh, pursuant to two fifty dash eleven C three A, to permit the proposed in-ground swimming pool to be located within the front yard, along Old Post Road, where swimming pools are prohibited, this is because this is a corner lot, I make a motion that we, uh, approve this variance, do I have a second?
Second.
Don't let me down, Tracy, all. Aye, opposed, carried with the same conditions. Consider, um, pursuant to section two fifty dash twenty-eight A one C four, to permit the proposed swimming pool to be located approximately seven feet from the principal residence, where a minimum separation of ten feet is required, uh, for the record, we have increased this from.
Six. Eight.
Um, as per last, the applicant has done so at our request, so, uh, that being said, I make a motion that we approve this application, do I have a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, with the conditions previously stated. Pursuant to two fifty twenty-eight A one B two, to permit an existing frame shed to be located three point one feet from the property line, where a minimum setback of five is required, he's already removed one of the two sheds. Um, the shed is located in the, uh, least impactful to the neighbor to the south, make a motion that we approve variance number four, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, uh, with, with said, uh, conditions. Variance number five, consider granting an area variance pursuant to two fifty dash twenty-eight A one B two, to permit an existing air conditioning unit to remain in the front yard facing Roosevelt, where such a placement is prohibited. Again, this is because of the corner lot, um, it's actually on the side of the house, the house fronts on Roosevelt. Um, it does front on Old Post, but the front door and driveway off of Roosevelt, I make a motion that we approve that application, uh, uh, variance. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? With said conditions. Consider, uh, pursuant to two fifty dash twenty-eight A one B two, to permit an exist, oh, sorry. Two fifty dash twenty-eight one B two, to permit the proposed pool mechanical equipment to be located within the front yard, where such a placement is prohibited. Again, it's a corner lot, it's the most least, it's the least impactful to the adjacent neighbor, I make that, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried with said conditions. Pursuant to two fifty dash fifteen B, B four, to permit a four-foot fence along Roosevelt Avenue frontage. Now, did he say he was taking that? Okay, Roosevelt, where a max.
The street, the Roosevelt street fence is being removed to adhere to code.
Okay.
Because it's a swaling fence, and at its low point, it's three feet, at its peak point, it's four, but that's what I had him clarify, and he said he's eliminating that street fence.
Okay.
But we need to make sure that the fence is compliant.
Right, so that's why.
But that's the front yard fence, considered front yard fence, but it's part of the pool security fence.
Okay, well, okay, so, um.
Well, variance is eight, nine, and ten are about the security fence, so there is a, so you'll see, there's, see, there's a new security fence that's five feet around the, around the pool.
That's the chain link one there before.
Yeah.
So. For the fence that's currently.
That's on the street.
Right.
Of all of it, or just the, like, on this, because he has some in part of the house too, if you see? I wasn't sure if he's removing all of it.
So in the photos that were submitted as evidence that Mark shared with us, it shows a white picket wooden swaling.
Yeah.
Decorative fence, he said, I asked specifically about that, and he, and he said, that is being removed to adhere to.
Yeah.
Code. Um, and so that, because that was something else that I think they were needing a variance for.
Right here is being removed.
Got it.
Okay.
So then.
Then we don't need a variance for that.
I was gonna say that eliminates another variance from the application, so we're actually at nine now.
Just confirm that.
It's variance nine.
Matt Guanera said it, but just make sure that the, the self, the owner has the, that same intent.
Got it, so let me. This is number seven, yeah, I, I.
It says nine, it says nine earlier on.
No, yeah, you gotta, I'm going by his.
Yeah.
So, so variance number seven is, um, as per, the applicant is being removed, so therefore we do not need to vote on that.
Yep. Well, they brought up, uh, Alexia brought up a point that maybe could hurt with the applicant on that one, I mean, was.
Alright.
Is, yeah, I guess it's ultimately up to the.
Jim, if we don't vote on this now, can we vote on it at the next meeting? We have sixty-two days to make a decision on that one. Out of the ten variances, there's one that's still in question, it's just removing the whole fence, which is part of it.
Noting it all for the whole thing, or you just.
There's only one, one back.
Want to vote now, then you can amend your decision?
Yeah, let's do that then.
Okay.
Yeah, let's vote now, and then if we, then we can amend the decision too. Everybody comfortable with that?
This is number seven.
Um.
If you look on the picture.
Yeah. It's to legalize that.
It's a scalloped fence.
But just, east side, west side.
Yeah, it's number nine in the beginning of it, because that was the.
Old frontage, right, so that's the one that's referenced, so we're just confirming that it's the front yard fence Roosevelt Avenue.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Because we have old.
Yep.
But there's four sides, so we just want to clarify.
I have three more, next three deal with Old Post Road.
Um, west side of pool, Old Post Road, east side of pool, and then the Roosevelt Avenue, when this variance, we just want to make sure it's pertaining to the fence that comes off of the home, which would be considered Roosevelt Avenue fronting, and it's not referring to the picket fence that's along the roadside.
Yeah.
Now you got me.
Front yard fence Roosevelt is this one, right?
Right.
That's it.
And then east side of pool is this one, right?
Further to the.
Uh.
Someone over that, no?
Further back, so there's one more behind that, that's.
That's east side, right? West side, north side.
Right, exactly. So it's just the fence in front of the home, is where.
Okay.
That was to legalize it, but the applicant said he needs to keep there, removing it, but again, one confusing, there's so many fences.
East side, the west side.
Alright, the applicant for the record, said he's removing the fence, I'm just, let's not vote on it. If he's removing, he said it for the record, he's removing.
Number seven is no vote?
No vote.
Yeah, it's not, like, moved, I guess.
No vote, uh, applicant stated he's removing the fence.
But there can't be a fence there, like, when we get to.
When he's done, right?
Yeah.
Stated on the record.
Yeah, it's on the record.
So. Number eight. Pursuant to two fifty dash fifteen B four, to permit a five-foot chain link fence along the eastern side of the proposed pool within Old Post Road frontage, where a maximum of three feet and open wood type are required. Just back the, back the bus up for a second, are we allowed a chain link fence around the pool?
It's not about the pool, it's about the fence being in the spot that it is.
Yeah, but the fence is being used to satisfy.
So we can approve it as a fence in size, but not in the make, because it's a, it's a liability thing, I don't want to be on record saying that we approve.
So how about we just say, permit a five-foot fence.
Counsel.
We always do this, we always go too far.
And we'll set it up.
Not about the pool. It's about with the location.
Hold on, let's back up one second, before, let's just approve a five-foot fence, and one of the conditions is, is that it meets the requirement of the village in the New York.
Yes, conditions.
Conditions of the new state.
So Cindy, um, eight and nine are gonna have an additional condition, um, that the material is to be, um, determined by the building inspector and the building department, or being performance with state code. That the building will be, uh, the fence will be built in performance with the state code. Good?
Yeah.
Okay, so, alright, so we're gonna go back, uh, eight, so pursuant to two fifty dash fifteen B four, to permit a five-foot fence, David, write this up, make sure you say fence, not chain link fence.
Yes.
Okay. Fence along the eastern side of the proposed pool with the Old Post Road frontage, where a maximum of three feet and open wood style are required. Um, three requirements, three conditions, sorry, three conditions, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? With the three conditions. Nine, consider grant, pursuant to two fifty dash fifteen B four, to permit a five, five-foot fence along the western side of the proposed pool, within the Old Post Road frontage, where a maximum height of three feet and open wood type construction are required. Make a motion, second by Tracy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I didn't hear you say.
Aye.
Okay, just make sure that.
Two ocks.
Um, and Dan knows all the three condi, that one will have the three conditions.
Yeah.
Pursuant to two fifty dash fifteen, to permit an existing six-foot fence along Old Post Road frontage, where a maximum of three feet and open style wood are required, again, that one will also have the condition. Um, I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Question. When you wrote number, you wrote this?
Yeah.
When you wrote number ten, why didn't you reference any pool? Whereas in eight and nine, you referenced the pool.
Oh.
Why did you do that?
I, I meant to, I just.
Cause it gives you an orientation for us to.
Alright, so let's.
What, why put the directions, you mean, or why? Well. I keep the directions, just to, so you know where it's located.
Very good, thank you, that's all I need.
Alright, so, alright, so let's, let's modify that, just to make Matlock happy here.
Listen, he does this on purpose. Alright, he doesn't get this at home, his wife beats him up at home.
Yeah.
Pursuant to, alright, so we're gonna amend number ten, um, pursuant to two fifty dash fifteen B four,
to permit a six-foot fence along the, along the, what's that? That be the east-west, that be the.
We're on the north now, the west one, we're on the north side.
On the north side.
Yeah, you're right, and.
On the north side of the proposed pool, within the old, where a maximum of three feet is required and old, and open wood type construction is required. Do I make a motion to amend previous variance, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah.
Are you eyeing in that you're posing?
No, I'm eyeed.
Oh, okay.
Do we have anything else that we need, or can we adjourn the hearing?
Adjourn the hearing.
Good job.
Adjourn the hearing, do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Show your microphones off. So.